It is. Go ahead, sir.
I call to order this meeting of the King George County Board of Supervisors.
And I call to order this meeting of the King George County Planning Commission. And for the record, we do have a forum.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we will open with an invocation from Mr. Collins and the pledge from Mr. Miller.
Please bow your head in prayer. Dear Lord, as we come this evening with the Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors, the citizens, Dominion Power, and we talk about the future of King George County, we ask that you give us wisdom, and for your name, we pray. Amen.
I would like the United States to the Republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as for all.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, Mr. Miller. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, then we will move on to public comments. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. When you come up, please state your name and your address, and you have your three minutes. So floor is open for public comment. If anyone would like to address the boards. Mr. Dinesh, do we have anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dinesh. Did anyone receive correspondence to be added or in the record? Okay, in that case, I will close public comments and we will move on to our presentations. So we have the Dominion Energy presentation regarding the energy infrastructure to support data centers. And we have Mr. Jason De La Cruz with Dominion Energy here, and Mr. Reagan Fakori.
Top, middle, least one. How's everyone doing this evening?
Doing well. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. Good evening. Chairman Granger, Vice Chairman Collins. Can you guys hear me okay? Vice Chairman Collins, Chairman Moss, Vice Chairman Parker, supervisors, and commission members. I'm Reagan Fakori, External Affairs Representative for Dominion Energy.
Could you pull the microphone down a little bit? I think some of the people in the back are having a hard time here.
How about that?
That's
Oh, fantastic.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem. I'm Reagan Fakori, External Affairs Representative for Dominion Energy, and we appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening. Dominion Energy serves 2.6 million customers in Virginia, around 9,200 of those here in King George County. We are a Fortune 200 company, proud to be headquartered in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and continue to focus on an all-the-above approach to provide safe, reliable, affordable, and sustainable energy. Over the next 15 years, the projected growth of most electric utility companies is about 1% year over year. Dominion Energy's projected growth is about 5%, in large part to the expansion of data centers. Virginia is home to the number-one data center market in the world. In 2022, the peak load for data centers in Dominion Energy's service territory was 2,767 megawatts, with the equivalent to 690,000 homes. And this number continues to grow. Dominion Energy has a longstanding relationship, excuse me, with King George in working together to support the needs of your citizens and your businesses. Over a decade ago, we worked together in supporting the increased energy demand for the Dogrin Naval Facility through a new transmission right-of-way. And then on the distribution side, we worked together last year to increase the reliability of the wide-water community. Dominion Energy remains committed to working with the county and our communities on future projects. To that point, we are aware there is an application for data center development here in King George, though we will not be able to answer any questions directly related to that application this evening. We hope to provide a strong understanding of electrical infrastructure needed to support these economic development opportunities and provide additional information specific to that project at the appropriate time. I will now hand it over to Ann Gordon Michael, Senior Communication Specialist at Dominion Energy's Electric Transmission Group. Ann Gordon.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, thank you, Reagan. My name is Ann Gordon Michael. As Reagan introduced me, I'm in the Electric Transmission Organization here at Dominion Energy, and thank you for taking time to hear a little bit about what we have going on in Virginia. Really, our goal tonight is to share information on what it takes to turn on data centers and other large customers, to get them online, and to help you understand a little bit more about our process and how we can work together to share information. So as you're looking for economic development goals and looking to expand potential large customers, you know, figuring out where to place them in your county and how that impacts your residents and neighboring counties is important. So we just want to share some general information. Most of this will be tailored to electric transmission, as this is a key part of servicing data centers and other large customers. But if you have any other questions, I do have some team members here with me tonight. So some of this Reagan covered in his introduction, but Dominion Energy serves many customers. We have about 2.6 million distribution customers and about 500,000 transmission customers between Virginia and North Carolina. We have a lot going on in Virginia right now. As you probably have heard, there are new demands from our customers. They want to see electrification, green energy, cleaner energy, and there's a lot of data center growth. As you've probably heard, Northern Virginia is a hotspot for data centers, and it is now making its way through other areas in Virginia. Now, I wanted to show I wanted to show a just quick model of our transmission system and the grid as a whole, so that everyone can understand when I'm talking about transmission, the differences between transmission and distribution. So I'm not sure if this points, but if you're looking at the power station right under the word "transmission lines", when power is generated at our power stations, we need to get that power to our neighborhoods, and sometimes that can be long distances. So we use transmission lines to do so. We typically see three voltages on Dominion's transmission system. So we have typically 115 KV, 230 KV, and 500 KV. When we're talking about transmission for data centers, we're typically talking about 230 KV. Now, when we get closer to the neighborhoods, then we need to reduce that voltage to a voltage that's safe to be delivered to your home or business. We use that. Substations have transformers that lower the voltage and then deliver the power through distribution lines. So there are some key differences. I won't go into a ton of detail between transmission and distribution, but one of the main things is transmission is a networked system primarily. So that means when we have an outage or equipment failure on one line, we're able to source that power to another location, so you do not experience a loss of power. This is a little bit different than the distribution system. But it's important to know that the transmission system needs to be strong in order to have a strong distribution system. So if you're experiencing outages at the distribution level, that's typically where you'll see them. If there's a storm or a downed limb, we can restore that power much quicker than we could if there was a distribution or a transmission issue. So we do have more stringent reliability compliance rules, like with NERC, and I'll talk about that in the coming slides. But it is important to understand, and we do get some of these questions from our community members and counties, asking whether adding a line for a data center adds to or decreases the reliability in the area. And it really does not take away from anyone's existing reliability, but it does not add to the reliability directly of the distribution system. But it is important for a strong transmission system. Another thing that I will cover tonight is the difference between undergrounding transmission versus distribution. Transmission is much larger. It's much more complicated to underground, but we are seeing more undergrounding of distribution lines. And lastly, I'll just touch on, you'll see 250 homes equals approximately 1 megawatt. So if you put that into perspective with data centers, we're seeing between 30 and 90 megawatts for a data center building. And we are now seeing multiple data center buildings in a campus. So that's quite a bit of power. So just a little bit about what's going on outside of data centers when it comes to working on maintaining our grid to make sure that it's operating efficiently. You've probably seen in the news that we are working on cyber and physical security, making sure that we're prepared for any malicious attacks on our system. We've been upgrading our substation sites with new security fences and also some cybersecurity infrastructure as well. We're changing our generation mix. We're retiring some of our generation sites and adding new generation. So that does impact the transmission system. And we also are experiencing some infrastructure lead time. So that, this is not just with our industry. After COVID, we've seen supply chain issues, but we also have long permitting times. So that does play into when we can get data centers or other large customers online. Now, this is another thing that Reagan alluded to. We have a lot of growth in Virginia. So our expected load growth is approximately 5% per year and projected to double in less than 15 years. So we want to ensure that, you know, we are thinking ahead. We have a electric transmission planning team that looks five, 10, 15 years in the future, and they primarily look at two different things. One, to make sure that we can support the needs of today. Is our infrastructure strong? Is it aging? Does it need to be replaced? And if it does, then we make plans to do that before there's an issue. So we primarily have two kind of buckets of transmission projects. One is the reliability that I mentioned, and just looking whether it's rebuilding a line, building a new line, or maybe it's just maintenance, or what we call re-conductory, which may not necessitate a new line, but we are replacing an existing wire on our lines that can hold a larger capacity. So there are some other things that we can do aside from just building a new line, and we always try to minimize our impacts when we can. But sometimes there is a large customer need, and typically with data centers, we will have a delivery point request, and this typically comes from our distribution folks or cooperatives in our service territories. If there is a threshold to meet a new substation or delivery request, then we will work with our distribution team or co-ops to be able to serve the new customer. It's important to note that as soon as a campus is approved and there is a new project, Dominion Energy is obligated to serve them. So there's really no turning back. We cannot pick and choose which customers we serve. So we do like to share this information. So when you're thinking about where to approve certain sites and where they're located, it is helpful to select sites that are near our existing transmission infrastructure and to not make assumptions on if that's the right voltage to be tapped into. But that's really why we're here, is to answer questions and continue the conversation. Now, we talked a little bit about the two different transmission projects and what we're looking at to continue reliable service. And I wanted to just touch on a few key regulatory bodies that have oversight over our transmission system. You've probably heard of FERC. If you have not heard of NERC, it was essentially created by NERC after a large-scale transmission blackout in 1965. This is basically to prevent that from happening again. So we have standards that we need to meet, whether that's a certain amount of load in one area or on one line and different contingencies that our transmission planners are running. So when we identify a potential NERC violation, that's when we start to look on what solutions we may need to build a new line or upgrade an existing line or just perform a little bit of maintenance. So we work closely with an organization called PJM. PJM is a regional transmission operator. And basically, our planning team will go and meet with PJM to share with them that we believe there's a potential NERC violation, and we'd like to work on a plan to find a solution. We will then go back at least a month later and then present the solution. So once that solution is agreed upon, then we take the project and kind of create that. So there are other processes and checks and balances to be able to get a project in motion. So just to kind of help you understand that it does not happen overnight. It does have several checks and balances before we can go forth and propose a new project. When we're building new transmission infrastructure, we typically have to go to the Virginia State Corporation Commission for approval. Any transmission line typically 230 and 500 KV will need to be reviewed by the SEC. Now, there are some instances where we do not need to seek their approval. It's typically if the line is less than a mile or some other variations. But it's usually if the line is semi-impactful in the community, then we need to go forward with an application. So I share that because if you're planning where you're placing your facilities and you're able to do so with less than a mile, that can save you a significant amount of time as you're trying to get your customers online. If we need to go through a lengthy SEC approval process and the routing is lengthy and complicated, it can add time. And finally, if projects do not need to go to the SEC, so if they're under 138 KV or substations, we typically go and work with our local governments to seek the approvals there. We also need to get other permits throughout these processes, like DEQ, sometimes Army Corps of Engineers. All that's, you know, part of our permitting process that can take time. Now, I know we've already kind of talked about data centers, but I did just want to share this image because I think it's really powerful as you look at the data centers that have really populated in Northern Virginia. So I think that there's no surprise that it's about 70% of the world's internet traffic comes through Northern Virginia. But now we're starting to see data center development pop up in other areas around Virginia. So if you think about a bunch of new circles popping up on this screen, you could see how transmission lines really do not see county boundaries. So it's also helpful to know and to share with your neighboring counties that if we have a new project, it may impact your county, but it may impact your neighbors as well. So open communication is helpful. I know you can't share everything, but the more you and your neighbors know about the impacts to your counties, there might be a county nearby that has a project that may impact yours. So just because a data center is coming to your county does not mean it is, the line will just remain there. So a little bit about the routing process. I did mention that it's best if you can find, locate data center sites that are close to our infrastructure. But if you cannot, then there is a process that we go through to get SEC approval and ultimately construct a new line. So first, what we look at is really, where is our point A and point B? If we have a new data center site and a substation located on or near their campus, then we need to connect that to an existing line nearby. So we start with a study area, and we look at potential routes. So we do this because we will submit multiple routes to the State Corporation Commission, and they will actually be the ones to select which route is least impactful. So we have basically all of our homework there based on community outreach, studies with the environment, all of these different routing studies that go into the whole application. So it can take up to a year just to get the application filed, and then potentially another year before we receive approval. So that can be a lengthy time to get your customers online, not to mention the time to construct. So once we file with the SEC, we'll usually list a preferred route that we believe is the least impactful. But we also take other items into consideration: cost, engineering, community impacts, wetlands. All of these things are very important to consider. And just something we like to share, so we don't have counties making assumptions on what would be a proper site to be next to a transmission line. It's also important that just because there is something that looks like a transmission line, just confirm with us if you have questions. Is it our transmission line, and is it the right voltage? That can help save a lot of time. So here are some examples of what our transmission structures look like. This is not a full list, but it does give you a pretty good idea of some of the different styles. So these are all overhead structures that you're looking at here. We have a lattice, H-frame in the middle, and a monopole. And the reason we're sharing these is really just to show you that we work with the area that we can, you know, with limitations, depending on how much right-of-way is needed, if we need to route in a certain area. We try to find the structure that both works for the geography, but also keeps in mind other impacts. So we do try to work very hard with our communities. If height is a concern, we might use the H-frame structures where we can. Those can be shorter, but may require more right-of-way. And then, as you can see on the right, the monopole structure does not have as many foundations, but it typically is taller. Overhead structures can be built pretty quick, a lot quicker than underground lines. So I know some of you may be wondering, can you put all of these lines underground? And the answer is, we do look at all options when we're looking at new transmission lines. I would say that most lines do go overhead. They are much less expensive. They take less time to construct, and they're less complicated. There's more complicated factors. Once you get underground, there are actually more environmental impacts when you go underground. When you're going overhead, you can span over areas like wetlands and other tight spaces. So I'm not saying that underground is not an option in some areas. We do have underground on our system, but it is not always a given. So it is something that we explore. We know that community members want to see underground, but there are other impacts as well. So there are good and bad things to both. Other things that go into our engineering really are clearances. We also clear typically, if you're going to have one transmission line in your corridor somewhere around 100 feet, we clear that right-of-way, and that's to protect our assets. So we'll make sure that we don't have any encroachments that can fall on our lines. So as we kind of wrap up tonight, I did just want to reiterate our commitments, not only to you all as leaders in the county, but also to residents. If there are projects that are moving forward in the future, we really work hard to make sure that when community members are impacted, that they hear about the project and have an opportunity to speak with us about it, so they're not just seeing something right when we file or right after we file. We do like to get as much impact as we can, sorry, input as we can from our community members to hear what really matters most. If we can make adjustments in our routing process, then we definitely do. But we also like to share what limitations we have and help community members understand really what we're looking at. But we have learned quite a bit from other communities on other projects that have shared really helpful pieces of information. So our goal is really to get out in communities early and often and listen to see what we can do to improve our routing process. And really, just to leave, the key takeaways that we would like for you all to keep in mind as you're looking for economic development opportunities in the county, really substantial new load growth with development will require electric transmission infrastructure, whether it's modified infrastructure or new lines. It really is only a matter of when. So we may be able to serve a new customer temporarily for their ramp-out period with distribution, but it will likely need transmission at some point. So the more communication we have, the better. Also, as I mentioned, proposed large sites near existing transmission lines can make the routing process much easier. Also, we try to co-locate where we can with other infrastructure, so we can hopefully minimize those impacts to the community when possible. And the approval and permitting process can be lengthy. So just if you can, share as much as you would like with us so that we can hopefully help you through this process. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McHale. I'll open up the boards. Do we have any questions or any discussion in regards to this presentation provided by Dominion?
Just out of curiosity, if you can, what's a typical amount of time necessary to get all the approvals and all of your infrastructure development in place for a data center campus?
So if we're just talking about the substation and the transmission line, it can take more than a year to plan. Depending if it needs to go to the SEC, we usually estimate a year and then probably up to a year to construct it. It really just depends on the mileage of the line. If it's a short line, then it could be a few months to construct. If it's multiple miles, it could take a year.
Okay.
But we do, if you have a question or an expedited timeline, we do encourage our customers to come talk to us early so that we can figure out ways that we can still get our customers online. It may not be the full data center campus, but we can at least serve you as you're building those different departments.
So just a question about, I mean, the amount of power is pretty staggering. Like, how is Dominion planning for that as far as being able to provide the power to generate the power for those new facilities or the growth that you foresee? So are we talking about new power plants, and if so, what kind are, what kind are we looking at?
Yeah, and I'll let Jason talk a little bit about the generation, but I don't think we're at a point right now where we're worried about the generation needed. But it is something that the company, you know, is thinking about as we're retiring or maybe delaying some of the retirement of certain generation sites. But really, our, our focus now is not the power that's generated, but getting it, you know, properly sourced and doing so where we aren't putting too much load on certain lines.
You just led into my question. So understanding that in Northern Virginia, part of the reason you're seeking out other areas is the load. And I've heard that from supervisors and Prince William Aloud, and that, you know, the load on that area with the electrical lines. So what is too much in an area or a region, I guess?
Well, I think part of that, and I won't speak on behalf of the data centers, but I think that there is, there are more opportunities around Virginia. Real estate costs are obviously one piece. But as far as the providing power to those new facilities, I think it's just a matter of when we can get there.
Jason De La Cruz, External Affairs Manager with Dominion Energy. I think, as you alluded to, is land cost is one of the issues and just density. There's just not a lot of room up in Northern Virginia to put a lot of the lines that are necessary up there. Capacity is just, it's relative to the area and relative to what's there existing and what we can expand on.
Okay, so, so there's more land available to, to be able to have substations and transmission lines. Now, with that, what, how much can you control transmission, like deciding where the lines go? Or is it after, there's a certain point where the counties have no more say in the equation, I guess, and it's now state-mandated or regulatory-mandated?
Yeah, so you are correct that the Virginia State Corporation Commission typically has oversight over the routing process. We do try to work with our counties because we can't cross county land without permission. So we'll typically meet with our county officials early on in the project and say, here's our study area. Here's A to B. We're looking at three different routes. And maybe we start with five routes, but we figure out how many are feasible, and then we basically rule them out. Like, this route has more wetlands, and this route is extremely expensive, and this one's on a conservation easement. So we look at all of those constraints based on where it is, and then we work with the necessary stakeholders to try to make that happen. And we try to get everyone to work with us before we file with the SEC. But ultimately, once it's filed, they have the final decision. So we have a say to extent, but there has to be a connection somewhere, and our job is really to find it and do our homework and make it the least impactful as possible.
And then, so there conceivably could be areas that it would be very hard to put a transmission line in. And then, so there conceivably could be areas that it would be very hard to put a transmission line in.
Yes, and it could be a number of things. Wetlands are difficult, really congested areas, areas with future development. We look at, you know, impact to communities. We really don't like to ruin someone's backyard. We just look at each location on its own and see what those impacts would be.
Right, thank you.
I just wanted to answer Chairman Parker's question about generation. So Dominion Energy filed our IRP this year. And you will notice, and that's kind of where that growth comes from that we're talking about, the winter storm that we had this past Christmas time. We had everything running at full till in order to keep the lights on. I will say, unlike some of our partners in other states, we did not have, we did not have to do rolling blackouts. But it was an eye-opener that we now need to maintain more generation and build more generation. So we're looking at an all-above approach. We have our offshore wind project. We have solar projects where we are looking to expand in combined cycle gas units and nuclear.
So just picking up on that, what's the actual reserve margin of Dominion today over peak load? In percentage terms?
That's a great question. It might be proprietary.
Okay, not a problem. The other thing is, what are you typically seeing at data centers in terms of their own standby generation, if they're doing any standby generation now? Are you seeing them put in significant standby generation? Or they're simply totally reliant on Dominion?
That would be a question for Mark.
So, Mark Carroll, Transition Planning for Dominion. What we're typically seeing with the data centers that they are putting in.
Excuse me, sir. Would you mind speaking into the mic so we can capture the information?
Apologies.
It's okay.
Yeah, so what we're typically seeing is data centers that come in, they have full backup. I'm just checking the difference. Yes. Is that any of the, the user fire stuff? Honestly, I don't know. I think it depends from developer to developer. I, yeah, I can't speak to that. I apologize.
I have a general question about microgrid, solar, local generation. I mean, how does that work in this larger equation of, say, housing development? Does 100% solar panels and generating, is grid support then?
So I just want to make sure I understand your question. So microgrids and how they work in the system? Yes, so. I'm going to be careful how I say this. You still need ways of transferring that energy. And that's why, and that's why we have transmission. And that's why we have to transfer that energy from different places. And it's also, it's just, energy man is just there. I mean, you have electric vehicles that are coming on the grid. And that's another reason why we're in growing. And your typical rooftop solar, though great, well, it helps an individual. It doesn't produce enough for a facility like a data center.
Well, my question is, are there limitations on taking advantage of, say, vehicle-to-load or rooftop solar or surplus production?
Yes, oh, yes. And we are doing that, yes, we are doing that to a point. So we have, right now, we're expanding out storage systems. So we have three on our grid right now. We're looking to expand that. We had a pilot program to utilize electric school buses as battery storage as well, to put them on the grid. And we're looking at different technologies as well as we continue to move forward. Again, it's going to be an all-above approach, especially if we continue to grow as fast as we are.
The distribution and planning system, now that it's two-way, I mean, it's not going to be a limiter should King George decide to go all electric school bus.
Back in 2018, the General Assembly approved the Grid Transformation Act. And a lot of that was to what we call grid hardening. So you will see a lot of our existing transmission lines that we are rebuilding, perhaps upgrading in certain instances. But we're also doing additional upgrades to our distribution system as well. And that's all part of it because, yes, there, it is becoming more of a two-way system.
Good evening. So generation, distribution and transmission. So the distribution and transmission, are you familiar with Stafford and King George distribution and transmission lines?
Yes.
Okay. So the line that just passed the King George County, the big, what'd you call it?
Are you talking about, sorry, go back to the.
On the left, all the way on the left. Nope.
I'm sorry, which slide are you looking at? The pictures?
So on the left-hand side, there's a line that just passed the King George County line in the Stafford. You familiar with that line?
Is that one of, is that one of our lines? Yeah, because it could be owned by one of the co-ops. We're not positive if that is owned by Dominion. Just would need to figure out exactly where it is.
You can't miss it. Think somebody would know where, or think, know that's yours or not.
I would have to go just double-check on a map before we confirm that it's one of ours.
Is there anybody here that knows whether that's yours or not? Okay. So the location where Birchwood is located, there is a, it's not there. It's, I guess it's a substation. Are you familiar with that?
I know that there is a substation up there.
Okay. So if that location in that area needed, wanted a data center, could it, would there be any additional lines necessary? Transmission or generate, transmission or distribution?
Well, we would first have to look at what the load request is before we would be able to tell you definitely one way or the other. But if it is a data center or data center campus, most likely you will need a new line. And depending on where and what the loads are, we may need to look at, make sure, make sure we don't need an additional source. So there are some limitations that we have as well as far as how many lines can be tapped into one line? How many substations can be tapped into one line? If we were to lose one source of power, if it drops below a certain threshold, then we may need an additional source. So if you are looking at a site in that area, we'd be happy to talk to you more about that. But we would probably need to know more about what the load requests would be.
We know.
There's an application in right now for that area for a data center. And so I'm surprised that you're not, that Dominion is not familiar with that at this point.
Well, I do know that there is an application in. I don't know the specifics on the load request or anything beyond that or what power source would be needed to serve that. As Reagan mentioned, we're really not here to talk about that particular location at this time. We're just trying to provide, you know, a general overview for your planning purposes.
Well, so the question comes up over and over again. Is there enough power to have these data centers in our county? And so that's why I was trying to be more specific with also being general at the same time.
Yeah, I understand that. It would probably need a new source of power to come from an existing line. But, you know, I don't want to say definitely, but that's typically what we've been seeing for new data center sites.
So the, a new line, would it, that's why I asked about the Stafford line. Could still use that line to beef up for a location in our county in that area?
We would have to look if it's a 230 line or a 500 line, how many substations currently tap off of that line and if we could use that as a source.
And another question is, so any distribution line or transmission line, you don't go over schools, do you?
We do have transmission near schools.
Yeah, we don't want transmission or distribution on school, going over schools. So.
We do hear that often.
Well, we tell them that again, so you make, so it's clear that I don't want that.
Well, that's another reason why we look at multiple route options. Because there may be a route that goes closer to a school and that's impactful to the community. So we weigh all of the options. It really just depends on each particular location and what you have in the area. Basically, what's in between point A and point B.
So the locality, we don't have any say-so in which way it goes?
Well, you do have input as a stakeholder. So we do like to talk to you and find out what's important, what could be a concern for the community members. And we go out in the community, we have meetings, we listen, and we usually adjust our plans. If there's a reason why we can't move it, we share that information and hopefully the community will understand. But we also share with the community that there is a public input period in the SEC process. So if interested, community members would like to be involved in that process. If they don't like our decision, then they have an opportunity to make their voice heard there as well.
So the SEC has the decision-making power where the lines go, no matter what?
If it, if it is over 230 and it meets their criteria, yes. But we'll typically propose a few different routes and they will make their decision there. So it's not just like, there's a school here and there's a school here and we're proposing two routes. There will usually be a few.
So when is the point when you all would have discussions with an applicant in regards to their needs and how you would service them?
Well, we are looking at what their load request would be to figure out what the solution is. So if it doesn't meet their criteria of making it to transmission, then it may be temporarily, you know, powered by distribution and it may be a different story.
So when, the question was, when do you get in the conversation with the applicant in regards to what they, what their needs are?
Oh, when do we, with, okay, the developer? Mark, do you want to take that?
So as the transmission organization, our customers are the co-ops and municipalities and our own Dominion Distribution Planning Group. So the applicants would be their customers. And so they have a conversation first. And once they decide what is needed to serve a particular development, they will submit it, they being either the co-ops or municipalities or our own Dominion Distribution Group, will submit a delivery point request to the Electric Transmission Planning Group saying, you know, we have need for a new substation at this location. They give us load projections or ramp schedule, if you will. And we start communication.
Okay, thank you. So what, what comes first? The approval of a data center? Or you all having a conversation with that data center that you can provide power to it?
It's a good question. I suppose it's happened both ways. We've had conversations first and then we've also been made aware, hey, this has been approved. So I think the point of this meeting with you guys is to maybe get out ahead of that and be part of the conversation before developments are approved.
Right, well, that's the information we, we, I, can't speak for the board, would like specific information. So when it does come time for the applicant, then I'll have specific information in regards to the power and the transmission and the distribution of how it would affect the community and how they would get their power and so on and so forth.
Understood. And from, from my perspective in the transmission organization, if we're made aware that the applicant is going to have meetings with you, we would certainly not just meet with you and the applicant. We would have to have our, you know, the distribution provider who, that's our customer. They would have to be involved with that as well. But I'm certainly, anybody in our transmission planning group is more than happy to come meet and provide any kind of input that we can. I mean, we have non-disclosure agreements with customers that we can't provide details, you know, about certain developments. That's up to them to be able to provide. But we're certainly able to give you guidance on what would be required, you know, as far as new transmission lines, if you were to approve a certain development, absolutely.
So Ms. Spender just gave me this.
On what it is. So as some of you know, I'm on a state committee. And so I have a chart of the electric transmission lines that come through the state. So we do have one that is marked red, that's a 500, I guess. What was your class, volt class? Do you want to look at? And then there's a purple one that's 220 to 287.
Do you know who owns those by looking at those lines, by looking at that chart?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Do you know who owns them by looking at this chart? By looking at this? No?
But it's a question you can answer and get back to us. I mean, I do have.
So here's my question I'd like to get the answer to. Get back to me on, is the one in Stafford, right across the King George line, it's either a transmission or a generation? No, no, it's not a generation. Transmission or a distribution line? Who owns it? And what is the, what is it called, KV? And then the one over at Birchwood, where does that go and what's its purpose?
I can tell you at the Birchwood site, there are two lines that come into the site, one from our Fredericksburg area and one from the Northern Neck area.
Two transmission lines?
They come into the site on double-circuit monopole structures.
So there, you know how many KV?
It's 230 KV.
230? Okay.
230.
All right, thank you.
Was Dominion a power off-taker for Birchwood Power?
I know they were a non-utility generator and that's the extent of my knowledge.
Okay. All right, but you're familiar with the infrastructure there, the substation that they have there currently?
Not specific, or I can pull up a one line and see what.
Right, we, I'm sure you know, they, they were exporting at peak about 250 megawatts from that facility at the time it was operating. Now, of course, it's gone, but the substation remains. So we know they could do at least 250 export. So we know they can bring at least 250 back in. I just ask you to bear that in mind, yeah?
Transmission perspective, we have criteria that AG mentioned. We have to adhere to certain criteria when we plan our system.
Okay.
We have a limitation on substations that we do not serve more than 300 megawatts out of a single substation. So if a site comes in, for example, a large data center campus, anything above 300 megawatts will require additional substations to be put on site. And as AG mentioned, you know, we have certain amounts of load that we cannot drop for certain contingency events. So we're not allowed to drop more than 300 megawatts. So if, if we have two stations and the aggregate load is greater than 300 megawatts and there's only two sources coming in, one of the events that we look at is what's called an N minus one minus one. You lose one source, you lose the other source. And we continually model and evaluate our system for all the different contingencies, loss of different sources and elements of the transmission system. And so if there's a scenario where we would lose two sources and drop more than 300 megawatts, we would have to bring an additional source into that site somewhere to prevent that event from happening.
Ms. Chair. So with King George, go ahead, Mr. Stone.
Thanks for coming out, guys. This is, I mean, fascinating information and really just mind-blowing kind of numbers, you know, that you have. But, I mean, I just had a couple of simple questions, like, you know, one, where's our nearest for the county generation station or power plant, whatever you want to call, that you all have, that, that power comes here to the county? generation station or power plant, whatever you wanna call, that you all have, that, that power comes here to the county? Jason, anyone?
Um, I'm gonna think about this. North Anna would be the largest.
North Anna, okay, that's the only one I could think of.
Yes, and then there are proposed solar projects in the Northern Neck that are currently being built and planned to be constructed.
So the majority, you said there were a couple of other transmission lines, I'm just looking at our little map here. The transmission lines are different ones that come here and feed the county, I guess, correct? And then uh, you did mention the new line, the, I guess it was a two thirty that you put in, run into base, where does that come from?
So the line that goes up to Dogren?
Yep.
It's, well, it's, it's a series of two thirty K V lines kinda strung together. There's a two thirty line that comes out of our Fredericksburg substation and it goes uh, east and then turns south into the uh, Birchwood plant. There's a breaker or maybe more than one breaker at the Birchwood plant. And then the line goes back out of Birchwood, remember I said it comes in on double circuit structures? So it's one line number coming in from Fredericksburg, it's a different line number going out Birchwood over to the Dogren plant. There are breakers at the Dogren plant, and so it's a different line that comes back down on the other side of the double circuit structures out of Dogren, and then it goes off to Northern Neck as a, as a different line number.
So um, so if, if we had a customer here in the county that required a very large amount of electricity, it would be like the same type of situation, you might bring a bunch of different lines. Distribution lines to come in to make one line going to that one customer is one part of the question. And this other part was if Dominion doesn't have enough power, do you all buy or get it from other companies to get to there? Like you said, the, the lines might have been, some of the uh, trends or uh, distribution lines might have been owned by somebody else, do you all?
I, I, I was specifically, or I thought it was specifically mentioned that there are different transmission line owners and I heard you mention distribution. It's, it's a different.
Would you mind stepping closer to the microphone again? I'm sorry.
I, I heard you mention distribution and that's a different uh, situation, cause what typically happens on new data center developers, because it takes for developments, because it takes so long to get a new transmission source into an area, even if they're adjacent to the, the transmission corridor, it still is gonna take some time. You know, with materials and engineering and, and just getting them hooked up and energized. So what typically happens or has to happen is the local uh, load-serving entity, which is the co-ops municipalities or Dominion's own distribution system, has to provide a bridging power to that site. And so they would look and see what kind of distribution circuits they have available and how much capacity they have on their distribution system to be able to serve that customer's ramp, uh, you know, up to a certain point. For example, let's say, you know, Dominion's distribution circuits typically rated thirty-six M B A. We don't load them up that much, but we can, uh, and so maybe there's twenty megawatts on a circuit and a customer comes in and distribution has to feed that customer until they can get transmission source on site. You know, they might tell them, well, you know, we've got twenty megawatts on the circuit now, we can go to thirty-six, so we can provide you sixteen megawatts of capacity until transmission is able to energize a new substation on your site. Well, it, it depends on their load ramp as to how long that would, would last for them. You know, they, they might, they might ramp up, they might be planning to ramp up to, you know, twenty megawatts in a year, in which case distribution really wouldn't have much to offer them in the way of, you know, a, a, a bridging circuit until we can get there with transmission. That help?
Yeah, and, and then my last question is, is when you're dealing with this mass and how big this, all this is, the um, do you ever, are there any issues about how far away a source is? I mean, do you lose voltage um, farther away you go, I mean, like you would at home or anything like that, you would?
Absolutely, and that's, that's part of the analysis that, like I mentioned, we, we modeled the transmission system. You know, if there's gonna be a new substation or substations added, um, you know, to the transmission grid, we would model all of that, we would put the loads in. Uh, we run multiple models, you know, for various years. Uh, we're typically looking five years out, but you know, we can, we can adjust and, and run scenarios. But like I mentioned, we take all the different elements out and different combinations, you know, we lose generators, we lose transmission lines. We, this whole big analysis, we're looking for what thermal overloads may occur on other, other elements. So if you, if, if you've got power running, you know, the transmission system's a network. It's not like distribution, which is a radial system, the, the power only goes the one direction to the load. On a transmission system, the power flows to where it's needed, it's interconnected, and that was the regional aspect of this whole thing. So if, if a line goes out, the, the power still has to get to the load, so it's gonna take another path. And so we're looking at, does it overload any of those elements in that other path? And to your point about, does it create low voltage, yes, we also look at, um, are any of the, the load centers, we, we have to maintain certain voltage levels and, you know, for these particular contingencies, do those voltages drop below that threshold that we have determined is acceptable? And if it does, then we have to come up with a reinforcement.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I just jump in and ask for a little more basic of an explanation on how the electrical grid works? When you're talking about your transmission network, is it separate and distinct from a co-op's network or do you share some infrastructure and facility and through some kind of node network that overlays your, all these networks?
So um, I'm, I'm gonna try and do this just high-level basic. P J M is our, our regional transmission operator. The transmission system, the, the eastern interconnect is basically connected from the Atlantic Ocean to the Rocky Mountains, except for areas of Texas. The, the grid, the transmission grid is interconnected, so power could theoretically flow you know, Atlantic coast to Rocky Mountains. The co-ops, uh, while they do operate transmission, they don't operate network transmission system. So we provide a delivery point to the co-op, they may take that, you know, for example, we might, very few of them take uh, delivery at two thirty K V, most of them take it at one fifteen K V, so we would deliver to a co-op at a, at a particular station, they might split that, that, uh, you know, they might take delivery and then split it and take lines to multiple substations within their service territory, but they're operated.
And you have no control over their distribution system?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
So is um, are data, what schedule are the data centers on? So everybody has a schedule of how much they pay for power, um, you know, homeowners pay different than this and that? So what is the, the schedule for them?
Have to defer, that's not my area, um, does anybody know? I'd be afraid.
Well, I would, I would think so. So I guess if you don't have the answer.
Yes, sir.
So can you? Okay, all right. So would a data center still be um, with their schedules, would they still have the same thing that happens to most customers as where they're charged more for peak load? So like a residential unit, um, if you look at the right side of your bill, you'll see um, the peak load and it's, it runs in a thirty-minute increment, so in order to save energy in your home, you don't run your peak things. If you get up in the morning, you have the air conditioner on and the washer and dryer and la, 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 that, that's on that thirty-minute, it's gonna get your peak load and then you're gonna be billed by your peak load. You know what I'm saying? So if you wanna save energy, you do, you take a shower, do the wash. As you get that done, you, you do other stuff, so it lowers your peak load. So are the data centers under the same type of um, billing? Is their peak load different than other schedules?
Well, I think the, the quick answer is they don't have a peak load, they're running equipment all day, every day. I don't know how they're billed precisely, but I know Jason is going to look into that.
Okay, and um, so Mr. Stonehill, the answer to your question is Dominion does buy power from, from the whole grid. So if you look at the right side of your, this is, I'm talking about residential, look at the right side of your bill, it'll, it'll tell you where they bought their power from and how much it costs to buy that power on the right side of your Dominion bill. And then you're on your Northern Neck bill. But um, so when you all buy power for these data centers, do you get a discount price or do you, cause you know, it might not be generating it? Someone, you know, the one in New Jersey generates a lot of that, it comes this way. So, go ahead, sir.
The short answer is Dominion Energy produces most of its energy, that we, we actually sell energy. When you're looking at, I believe when, I don't have a bill in front of me, but you might be looking at the breakout of what we consider riders. And those are the facilities in Dominion Energy. So there's a name, there's a rider, I'm not gonna get into the billing right now, but that, that's a breakdown of the bill and what percentage or what charge you're getting into that bill, it's not where we're buying energy from.
Well, I'm not gonna argue about that, but that's where it says you're buying that amount of energy that I'm paying on my bill that you bought from here at this rate. But anyhow, we'll just go past that. So when, when I, my, I was on the school board and we did energy management, that's why I asked these questions about peak and schedules. You know, for being cost-effective and how a da- a data center fits into those models. I understand the governor, uh, yesterday, I think it was yesterday, he said they're gonna, Surrey and North Anna, they're gonna put another reactor, you all are gonna put another reactor in both those places and upgrade the one that you have. He had, he had an announcement at Surrey, said that's what's gonna happen, and then he mentioned North Anna. I'm sure you're familiar with that.
I think he was referencing, it was the fiftieth anniversary for Surrey, that we've been operating for fifty years, North Anna had it previously. And what he was mentioning is that we're investigating the potential of a small modular reactor.
Okay, so can you tell me just a little bit about that?
Sure.
You're right.
Uh, I'll keep it very high level, small modular reactor, to pretty, to put it pretty simple, it's basically a uh, nuclear sub. And it's retrofitted, uh, it is, you can produce right now per, perhaps up to three hundred megawatts. Um, and it would be located about uh, around eight, one hundred acres. I don't know how much more technical you want me to get, super boss, sir.
That's pretty good, but so, uh, is, other than the two sites that the governor mentioned, are there other sites in Virginia that are of interest for your company?
If King George is one of those sites that would like to be on that list, we would have, happy to have that conversation.
I didn't say that, I'm just asking questions. I'll put words in my mouth, man, you kill me. All right, thank you, mister.
So I'm gonna ask, uh, you talked about uh, finding a path for transmission lines. And so, uh, if there's already, let's say there's already two thirty line, um, do, do you look at using the existing path as, cause the easements are already in place, uh, as an opportunity to co-locate lines if there's a need for multiple lines coming in?
Yes, if we can use existing easements, then we will try to do that, that would limit impacts. If we need to, rather than construct a new right-of-way, if we could just expand it slightly, then we would look into doing that before getting new right-of-way. So whatever we can do to minimize those impacts in routing, we'll try to do that.
Okay. Ms. Flatlin?
Yes, um, I was just wondering how the cost of all of this new infrastructure gets passed down to the customers. Do you know how mu- how that works?
Well, as Jason mentioned, we do have riders, you'll see that on your bill, a transmission rider. Our infrastructure is passed down to the customer, so there is a portion of that that you will see on your bill. I don't know how much detail you're looking, but it is paid for by the customers.
So the individual customer, I mean, all the infrastructure, I would assume is gonna get paid for by the residents of the entire county or by that particular business that's needing, needing the infrastructure?
Yeah, it would be our entire customer base, and that's one of the reasons why when we go to the State Corporation Commission, we need to show them that this is a smart decision, that we need this infrastructure so that we aren't just spending money to spend money and that we're looking at the most reasonable cost because it does go back to our customers.
State customer, you're talking about statewide, Virginia-wide, not county-wide?
Correct.
Okay.
So if, if you have infrastructure in your county, it will be dispersed by our entire uh, customer base.
So we as customers in King George are paying for Northern Virginia's data centers for the transmission lines?
But the, keep in mind that these lines, as I mentioned, do not see county boundaries, so it may be going through multiple counties. That's why you can't really, you know, cut it out in one area.
I understand, I'm just a, I'm a rate payer, and I did, the question was, am I paying for infrastructure for other places?
Yes.
And you answered yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
So to bring in these electric lines, is, is there ever eminent domain?
So, yes, but we try to avoid that when possible. So as I mentioned, when we have all of our community meetings, we try to minimize the properties that are crossed. We try to work with those property owners so that before we even get to an S E C decision, we've already started those conversations. We often work with neighbors to locate transmission lines if it's on their property, moving it to a location that is more preferred, we do uh, compensate for easements as well.
So what happens just per se that somebody says no?
Well, if they're unwilling to uh, negotiate with us and the S E C has selected a route that we need to construct, then we will have to go into condemnation. But we try our best not to do it.
So who does that? Does the locality do that or does?
We have a real estate team.
Okay.
Do that.
And now, um, going back to, you talked about the process the applicant does, from my understanding, it's a very, a long process.
The S E C?
The P G M, when you, when they apply and, you know, what, about three years or more, it could be up to three years for the whole process?
Yeah, if you think about when we get the load request and we see a potential N R violation, when our team, Mark's team goes and, and talks to P J M about what they're seeing, and then they need to go back to the drawing board to prepare whatever the solution is, P J M needs to agree before we even start planning the S E C application. So it can be a few years before we actually construct it.
But like most projects, they could actually go to P, P, I would get this term P. P J M, before they even file an application with the locality, correct?
We will go meet with P J M before we meet with the locality because we don't even know if it's real yet. I mean, we could meet with P J M and they could say, no, you can just reconductor that and you don't need a new line.
Right, but the applicant comes to you first, right, cause they have to see if they can even get power, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then my last thing is, you were talking much earlier about that these sites are a hundred percent, they generate their own backup power. So what kind of backup power do they use? Is it solar with battery storage, wind power with battery storage, hydro, what do they use typically or does it depend on the customer?
I am really not an expert on, on that answer, I, I think it would have to depend on the applicant.
But it could be any of those, it doesn't have to just be gas, right, or?
I be- I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
I just wanna thank everyone, um, I know there's a lot of, a lot of questions still needs to be answered. Uh, I know a lot of it's probably geared toward the potential project. Um, and like I said, we're, we're working with the applicant very closely. We are not the applicant, and so we're working with them. Uh, I think once they appear before this body, we will be with them during that process and we hope to answer a lot of those questions directly about that project, but we are still working through it. It is a process, and like I said, if, if there is necessary transmission needed for that project, there's gonna be some time that we have to go through that as well.
Could I ask one more question, just to really simplify this for me?
Yes, sir.
An applicant does all this stuff with the local, you know, jurisdiction where they're wanting to build something and basically if they clear all that and they get a site selected, if they come to you, you're obligated to provide the power?
That is, that is correct.
All right. Without depriving anybody else of their power, all right? Of all the data centers that you guys have supported in Virginia, have you ever not been able to provide power to them on the timeline they've asked for?
The short answer is, if a locality approves a client, whether that is a home, a business, a restaurant or data center, we are obligated to serve by any means possible. We try to do that in the least impactful way and we work with the SEC on that. Over the years, because there's now expansion of data centers, we are working with them for a ramp schedule. So the data center needs three hundred megawatts. They won't necessarily, they're not going to get that right off the bat. They may get half of that or a quarter of that. It depends on the capacity in the area. It depends on the infrastructure that's needed. It really depends on the lo, the area.
So you could impact the, their full build out schedule, but you're not gonna, you're not gonna be the long pole in the tent that stops them from building on any site they pick.
I think if they're going to operate, they're probably going to build in a certain schedule, but we're going to work together.
Well, they're.
That's the short answer.
They're intelligent people and they, you know, I can't imagine that there's a a data center owner out there right now who hasn't already done several of these. So they probably have their own in-house staff that's duplicating sort of what you're doing. But bottom line is if they, through their processes and working with the locality, pick a site, you guys aren't going to be what stops that site from being viable.
No, no, sir.
Okay.
That is up to the locality.
Yeah, all right.
So the, up in Northern Virginia, all the data centers, there was some stuff in the news about a year ago in regards that it was going to take Dominion a couple of years to service them. And there was a lot of back and forth in that. So he asked the questions, if if you put up a data center, you have to put power to it, but what you're saying is you don't have to put power to it right away.
And that's, that's part of the ramp schedule. That's when they file their application with us and their information, they let us know what their load letter, their, it's a load letter. It let us know what their load is. Mark, if I'm wrong on this, please let me know. And that determines what that schedule is going to be. Schedule is meaning years and what is necessary for that.
So as I said, you're, you might impact their build out schedule. So you might only provide them enough power for one or two of their buildings and they have to wait on you to be able to provide additional power to continue their build out. It's a cooperative thing.
Exactly, and that's why, I mean, why we're here today to work with the locality, why we're also working with a lot of the entities that are looking to build is because depending on where they're looking to build, as Ann Gordon was saying, if we're building out more than a mile, there's a lot more that goes into that planning, that goes into that permitting. And, you know, as she mentioned, it can go from anywhere from three to four years potentially. It just, again, it depends on the project itself, but we work with them all the way.
So the cost to customers, as you mentioned earlier, it's passed on to all the customers of Dominion. Is the SEC, do they have a a regulation of how much you can increase a a percentage of a bill in order to, for your build out? In other words, if Dominion says, I need thirty billion dollars to build out for all these data centers and I'm going to send it to your, you know, your, all these households and every other, and is there a percentage that you can raise the the bill of folks? Not just homeowners, but businesses and so forth?
Yes, the, well, short answer is, SEC controls everything. So they get to set the race, they get to do it. But I would also point to the governor, there was a piece of legislation this year who they were looking to expand the pilot program of undergrounding and that legislation was vetoed by the governor because he was afraid of the cost that it would impede into the repair. So that is also always taken care of.
So is there a percentage of rate increase?
A threshold would have to be discussed by the SEC.
Okay. So you do, you don't know if there's, there's a law that says there's a certain threshold at this point?
Not to my knowledge.
Could you give the answer?
I am unaware of any percentage.
Okay. In that case, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. De La Cruz, Mr. Fakuri and Ms. Mickel. Really appreciate you guys coming out and providing answers and and, you know, being patient and and working to answer those questions. I'll ask, is there any other business or any other discussion that the boards would like to have?
Just really, I do thank you all for coming out. It's very informative, so appreciate you all taking time, taking time out of your day to come and speak to us. Thank you very much.
Okay, in that case, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the King George Board of Supervisors adjourned till Tuesday, August first at six thirty PM here in the boardroom.
We have a motion probably second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, treble, tie motion carries, we're adjourned.
Well, before we entertain a motion to adjourn, uh, this is Heather's last meeting. So just like to say thank you. Time, effort, patience, coddling sometimes, leading that horse to water, all of those cliches. You've done them all, you've done them all very well. Plenty of us here, I'm sure, have been under your wing at one time or another and just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the kind words. I've certainly enjoyed working with the commission over many years. Looking forward to new opportunities, being an average citizen and spending more time with my family. So again, thank you for all the opportunities that King George has afforded me. And I have all the faith that Louis and Richard will be in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. With that, we have a motion.
I, I make a motion that we adjourn until Tuesday, July eighteenth at seven PM.
Second. We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.